I would like to call to order the June 17th meeting of the Avalon City Council. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Richmond, Councilman Rich Hernandez. The invocation will be done by Jackson of Eagle Electric.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody. My name's Jackson and I'm from Eagle Electric. I just want to say a bit about myself. I've been here for about two years and I love this place and I plan on being here forever. Let me just open this up in a prayer for the meeting. Father, I just would ask for you to join us today in a place of understanding and wisdom to give us a heart of change and compassion. This is a tough subject, this water issue, and I know that you have total control of it, so I ask for you just to help us to be in a place of humility, that no one is better than anyone else and we're all the same in your eyes, so I just ask for you to give us understanding, give us patience with one another, and help us to just be okay with the change and come to a common ground with this water situation. Amen.
Thank you. Your call Denise.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here.
I have a couple of announcements. May I start?
You're the mayor.
The DMV will be back in town on July 8th through the 10th. We're so happy they came back rather quickly, so you may sign up at City Hall again July 8th through the 10th. I also like us to remember Giselle Hames who passed away recently. She will be missed. Any other announcements?
I have a few. Let's see, I guess mostly procedural. On the presentations this evening, we will be taking presentation number two prior to presentation number one. Presentation number two is on the plastic bag ban and will be provided by our city attorney. There will be no actions for approval this evening. Also, just some wording changes I need to go through real quickly. On the consent counter, item number three should read "Purchase of a saltwater pump control panel for Catherine Saltwater Booster Station." Consent counter item number five, sorry, this is into the weeds here, the second sentence should read "It is necessary to replace the worn pumps." On consent counter, item number 11, authorize staff to purchase three knife gate isolation valves. I think that is the majority of announcements that I have. I do believe the city attorney, actually, no, I have one more announcement. Following the written communications section, I would like Captain Federal to be able to come forward to introduce a new sergeant and a new deputy if that is acceptable to the council before we get underway. And then, secondly, I believe the city attorney has an announcement as well.
Yes, if possible, with the city council's four-fifth vote, we'd like to add a closed session item immediately before item number 12, the general business, which is the consideration of the urgency ordinance. This morning, I received a phone call from counsel for the Santa Catalina Island Company who indicated that if the council had passed this urgency ordinance, that the island company would strongly consider initiating a litigation against the city. I've taken, done some research on the validity of their causes of action and would like to be able to discuss that with the council in closed session prior to your consideration of this item. So because this came this morning and because I'd like to give you our opinion on this threatened litigation, I'd ask by a four-fifth vote that we add a closed session. The title of the closed session would be Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation: Significant Exposure to Litigation, One Case.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope.
Call for the vote.
Four ayes, Marshal Cassidy Hernandez and Olson, and one no, Councilmember Sampson.
I have an announcement. May I?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to make an announcement about the Fourth of July Parade this year. We're honoring WWII veterans, so I wanted to do this early in the night because usually the, when we speak, it's like 11 o'clock. So we want to invite, if anybody out there within my voice knows WWII veterans, we are honoring them and they are going to be the highlight of our Fourth of July Parade this year. We want them to come over to Catalina. We'll make any accommodations that we can possible to these veterans. There's only a few of them left in the world and we want them to know that they're going to be our grand marshals this year. The VFW would like to hold them in the highest esteem post 4682 Island Outpost and we wanted everyone to know that if you know of any WWII veterans, have them, give us a call here at the City Hall, call Tom Campbell at the Veterans of Foreign Wars, call me, anybody that you possibly can, if they need to know more, if we have to provide, somehow find them housing, anything we can do to accommodate them, to get them here and make sure that they're comfortable and they're safe and they're fed and they're the highlight and they have a good day that day. So anybody knows any WWII veterans, please have them come here on the Fourth of July so we can honor them and not ever forget what they've done for us. Also, one other announcement I'd like to make is there's going to be a golf tournament for Vietnam veteran Uncle Richard Soldanya on Saturday and it's a fundraiser for him. It's going to be a lot of fun. Talk to Marty Soldanya. You can sign up at the pro shop if you need to. It's going to be an all-day event. We're going to go to Joe Moschato Field after, feed everybody, and we're trying to raise money for my uncle that, so he can be taken care of. As you all know, he's a decorated Vietnam veteran wounded in action. He has Parkinson's disease. He's in the hospital right now and he's rehabilitating. Please send out your prayers to him and show your support in any way possible. Just come up to the Joe Moschato Field in the afternoon on Saturday and have a beer up at the Beer Garden with the VFW or have a nice meal and everybody is welcome. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements? Written communications?
Yes, Mayor, would you have one piece of written communication that relates to Agenda Item Number 12 and perhaps I can wait until we hear that item before reading it, if you please?
Sure.
Okay.
Presentations?
Yes, so this evening we have two. The first presentation we are going to present is in relation to the plastic bag ban and it will be provided by our city attorney, Mr. Scott Campbell.
All right, so we're going to briefly go through the proposed statewide single-use plastic ban, which is actually scheduled for a hearing tomorrow morning. We believe that this will pass. So what is the current law? Current law just requires that grocery stores basically have the little recycling boxes outside of stores for when people come back, they can put their plastic bags in there. That's the only requirement of state law. Now, 77 cities and counties have passed bans on plastic ban uses that go much, much beyond that and those bans have generally been upheld by courts. Why are the people concerned about plastic bans? There's approximately 14 billion single use per year and only five percent of these are recycled and basically this costs local governments about $25 million to collect and bury them. One of the major concerns of plastic bans is that they make their way into the stormwater system and they can not only clog up sewers, but they get into the ocean and waterways and they're a form of marine debris. So what are, the majority of the public entities that have regulated this have basically said that you can't use plastic bags anymore. You have to use either paper bags or recyclable bags and you still have to pay 10 cents a bag so that unless you bring your own, if you're going to use a bag from the store, you have to pay 10 cents. Most of these cities give a six-month head start to businesses in the city. If Avalon were to adopt an ordinance, I would suggest that you follow what other cities have done since they've already been sued and they've prevailed. Other cities charge a 10% charge, which can be collected and kept by the store. So it's not a fee, it doesn't go to the city, it stays with the store. Again, it's 10%, some go a little bit higher, but most, the majority are 10%. And there are certain scientific, we're not going to get into this, but individual exceptions, let's just say this, if you're on food stamps, you don't need to pay for the 10 cent. So if you're destitute or on food stamps, you do not need to pay the 10% bag. That's the exception. We can sell the recycled bags at a 10 cents and there are certain requirements in terms of the content of what a recycled bag must, the fibers and the composition of it. It's a long scientific thing, we're not going to go into that tonight, but the stores, especially Vons, knows exactly what type of recyclable bag has to be made available. The legislation, whoops, let's go back. The legislation which is scheduled for hearing, whoops, we're going too far ahead. This is what the legislation basically does. It's going to create a statewide rule so that cities are no longer going to be able to decide what they're going to do themselves. It's going to basically say that plastic bags are completely banned and that you can, you charge people at least 10 cents per bag. You can charge more if you want, but it has to be at least 10 cents per bag. And again, we're going to talk about, it talks about the type of materials in these recyclable bags that you're going to charge 10 people for. What's the...
Only 10?
Only 10.
10 cents.
10 cents. What's the timeline of this? Basically, if it passes, what it says is you have until, big stores have until July 1st, 2015, to implement this. There's only one store that this applies to in Avalon, it's the big Vons, they qualify. So if the state legislation passes as currently written by a year ago, in a year, they're going to have to stop all delivery of plastic bans. For other smaller stores that are going to be probably just in Avalon, only the Vons Express, you get another year, 2016, to apply. What is a single-use carryout bag? This is the, what is going to be banned, this is their definition of it. It's basically, you can, it's so flimsy or thin that you can only use it once, it tears easily, and so if that's the kind of bag and they've got the scientific definition, it cannot be used. Again, exceptions are pharmacy bags. If it's a bag meant to protect a certain item from damage, there's, you're thinking probably, it may involve the special type of bags for frozen foods and various dry cleaning and laundry bags are not included. A store, okay, for a store, basically they're defining store as a full-line, full-service retail store with gross annual sales of at least $2 million. We've checked with Vons, they qualify. So Vons is subject to this. It's got to be either 2 million or 10,000 square feet. Vons satisfies the 2 million, so this applies to Vons. For other stores, it is basically convenience stores, food marks and other entities engaged in the limited sale of, first it's, there's two types they have here, it's bread, milk, soda, snack food. If that's your type of store, you have another year. If you're a convenience store that sells alcohol and has more than just the basic milks, bread and sodas, you also qualify there. So we're thinking it's probably only going to be little Vons, but we haven't done a store-by-store inventory. Now, if you don't meet these two requirements, then it's voluntary. You do not have to comply if you don't want to. But if you want to comply, what happens is you send a letter to the California, Cal recycle saying that I'm going to voluntarily comply with this, and then if you do, once you say that you're going to voluntarily comply, you have to comply with everything. So you opt in and then it is if the legislation applies to you. So again, if a store wants to, you know, once you opt in, you can opt out and whatever the rule eventually is, you have to comply. Okay, this, what is, again, we're looking at what is okay. It's a reusable grocery bag and you look at this definition and it's, you know, a plastic bag or a paper bag that has a handle, 125 different uses, 15 liters. Paper bags are considered good for 125 different uses. I was surprised by that. Has certain chemicals you cannot have and it also talks about who manufactures it and what it's made of. Obviously, there's a big lobbying industry that has worked to get their bags certified for the reusable grocery bags. Who doesn't have to apply? Again, if you're on food stamps or on general welfare program, you still can't use a plastic bag, but you don't have to pay the 10% fee. And then there's various types of plastic bags that are not covered by the proposed ban. The current legislation is silent as to what happens to the revenue generated by the 10%, but we believe that it's going to, the stores are going to be able to keep that additional income. Some cities require the funds to be put into anti-litter programs. Those have not been challenged yet. The legislation may be revised to include that. One thing that we would not advise doing that because there's an issue that if you're telling people how to spend their money, then there's a question, is that a fee versus a tax and there's various procedural requirements and so it's best not to get involved in that issue and just let the stores keep the 10 cents. If you're covered by the plastic ban, you still have to have the little boxes outside your store for the recycling of plastic bags. So even though plastic bags are not allowed, you're still required to have the little containers out there for the residual plastic bags that may be out there. And the legislation does allow cities to impose fines, you know, they're pretty hefty. It can be 500 for the first violation and up to 2,000 for the second. And we collect those through our code enforcement if you want to enact those type of rules. This is a preemption issue, which means that if this legislation passes, cities cannot do anything. You cannot regulate the use of plastic bags, period. The state is taking control over this and so city ordinances that are not in effect by September 1st, which is the next slide, if you don't have anything in effect by September 1st of 2014, you are bound by the state law, which means if Avalon wanted to do anything, you have, we have to move quickly and get it going either on the July or August agendas. And starting January 1st, 2015, if you have, if you have not enacted, you can, you cannot enforce any laws that were enacted after September 1st. So there's a, like a four-month period there where if you act after September 1st, you can go ahead and force people to comply, but as of January 1st, you can't. One exception to the rule is that if the state legislation passes, Avalon could decide to make the fee per bag 15 cents, 20 cents, a dollar. The state does allow you to do that, to encourage, again, people from using recyclable, well, from bringing in their own bags rather than using the bags available at the store. So what can Avalon do? Well, we're going to assume that this thing passes. We spoke with our people up in Sacramento. This bill has breezed through, there's a hearing tomorrow. It's already been passed by the Senate. Tomorrow, it has a final hearing in the Assembly Finance and then it goes up to the Assembly. By all measures, it's going to pass, the governor's going to sign it. So anytime before it passes, you can pass your own ordinance on plastic bans. You can go ahead and do that. We just have to make certain that it's been adopted by September, I'm sorry, by September 1st and so it doesn't have to be effective, it just has to be adopted by that date. Where will the language be found? It's going to be in the public resource code. Current status, it was introduced in February 2013, it seems like a long time ago, but it's moving very, very quick for the state. It's already passed the Senate and tomorrow, again, it's before the state assembly. There are certain amendments that are being discussed that may make a change there. One of the big changes is if some of the stores that want to voluntarily comply, they're saying, hey, if I'm voluntarily comply, I shouldn't have all these other regulations. You know, if I don't have to comply, let me comply voluntarily, don't hit me up with everything else that is in the legislation. There's some thought of moving the preemption cutoff date from September to January, which gives you four more months to consider an ordinance. And then there, you know, the scientists are talking about the type of materials to be used in the bag and that is it. So basically, if you don't do anything, the state ordinance is going to govern. I will tell you that 99% of the cities that have, well, not 90, 90%, of the cities that have enacted these plastic ban, plastic bag bans is identical to what the state is doing. So what the state is basically doing is saying, so many cities have done this, we're going to apply this across the board and those have all been upheld and so, again, the safest thing to do is to allow the state ban to take effect. If you wanted to do anything more aggressive than the state ban, then you may be subject to litigation because the plastic ban, plastic bag people are out there suing entities, but they've lost on the challenges that impose the restrictions proposed by the states and that's by the state and that's why the state just said, this has already been upheld, it's valid, let's just make this apply across the board. So pursuant to your request, that's a very speedy presentation on the plastic bag ban.
So, I mean, there's really no, actually, be taken, is there any discussion about, do we feel like we might just want to wait till it goes through the state, see what happens and, or, I don't think we want to, you know, ramrod any of our own things, it seemed like we just want to wait till, see what goes, see what happens? Folks?
I think we should let the business community know what's coming down the pipe from the state and that effective July 1st of next year, that this will be the law that you land and, but I don't think we should go out there and spend good money to set up ordinance that won't be in effect for four months.
All right, okay.
Not that all the money we don't spend with DDK is good money.
All right, well, thank you.
Right, no problem. Okay, second presentation this evening, I'd like to invite Wayne Griffin and David Cree forward. They're going to be presenting to you on the result of the Catalina Chamber's feasibility study for a cruise ship birthing facility here in the city of Avalon. So we'll allow them to get set up.
I'm sorry, could we, I am so sorry. Captain Federal?
Oh, we did forget that, I'm sorry.
Well, they're, maybe giving...
That's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Do the announcement while they're getting set up, that's a great idea.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate the minutes for the introductions. My name is Doug Federal, Unit Commander Avalon Station, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce our two latest personnel additions. For the past several years, our station detective bureau has had one station detective. He's worked under a patrol sergeant, we had our DB as a collateral duty. We're changing that a little bit to put more of an emphasis on our investigations, being both proactive and responsive. We're bringing over a new sergeant and a new detective. They're going to be full-time in our detective bureau. Sergeant's going to be a working detective. He brings with him 33 years of department experience, last 14 years in Narcotics Bureau. So we're bringing over a lot of narcotics investigative experience over. And then we've got another deputy here, John Hatfield. His name is Sergeant Lloyd Luna, the detective is John Hatfield, 16, 14, 16? 16 years of departmental experience, last several years at West Hollywood Sheriff's Station. So I'll step aside and let him say hi.
Hi. I think you said it all. Good evening. Sergeant Lloyd Luna, again, as the captain stated, been with the sheriff's department for a little over 33 years, last 14 years assigned in Narcotics Bureau and I'm honored to be here and honored to serve the island communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Luna.
Good to have you.
Detective Hatfield, like my sergeant stated, very happy to be here. I've been here, last time I was here was as a youth at Goodell Emerald Bay, so I spent three summers over there at the Boy Scout camp, so I do have a little bit of familiarity with the island, plus doing a little training with prior experience with Harbor Patrol, so it's a pleasure to be here and serving in this community.
Welcome to the island.
Good to have you.
Thank you. Wayne Griffin, President and CEO Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce, and we are delighted to do a quick run-through and executive summary, if you will, of feasibility study that the chamber commissioned to look at the possibility of putting in some kind of a cruise ship birthing facility in Avalon. And believe it or not, we started this about seven years ago and you might ask yourselves why. Well, numerous cruise line executives on numerous occasions over the past several years have been telling us that there will come a day when cruise ships will just refuse to call it destinations where they have to tender passengers ashore in small boats. It's a liability for them. As we all witness every Monday and Tuesday, and on another day, a cruise ship is here in port, it takes hours to offload a 2,000-passenger cruise ship and they're just getting bigger. And so the lines are all kind of saying at some point in time, even destinations that they love, and they love us, may have to fall by the wayside if they can't pull up to a birthing facility of some kind. And again, why is that important to us? Well, in 2013, we had about 160,000 visitors that came on cruise ships and they spent a little over $19.5 million in our local economy. Those same 160,000 passengers generated over $1 million in taxes and fees to the city of Avalon. This year, with the addition of the Carnival second ship, we are on target to have 280,000 visitors on cruise ships. And if you just look at this graph that, you know, will take your million dollars in taxes and fees to over a million, seven hundred thousand. So this isn't just, this would be nice for the cruise industry, this is dollars and cents to our community and to the city of Avalon. We also did an informal survey of cruise line itinerary planners and asked them, and they basically told us, if you build it, we may come. All of them said, it will make us more likely to schedule calls in Avalon. And you'll notice, it isn't just Carnival and Royal Caribbean, which we've done business with before, but it's Holland America and Disney and Crystal and Seaborn. It's the top-of-the-line cruise lines that, right now, won't even consider us because they will not tender their passengers ashore. So how did we go about doing this? Actually, about seven years ago, we started this project. It's been funded through the Chamber's budget, plus donations from about a dozen Avalon businesses. City of Avalon actually contributed ten grand at one time and so did a cruise line. We have done this in consultation with city managers, going back to Pete Wilson, and mayors have been involved in the study as well. And so what we're going to do is we're going to examine what are our options. There's no point in coming up with a recommendation or even an option if regulatory agencies are going to give it a thumbs down, so we had our consultants actually take our options to regulatory agencies and get some feedback from them, and then, how do we pay for it? So, we had some underlying principles and the first one is, we don't have any money. And we made this very, very crystal clear to the cruise industry when we started talking to them about this, that if this was going to become a reality, they had to become financial partners or it wasn't going to happen. And the other principle is, the costs will be financed, guaranteed, or otherwise provided for by the cruise industry. Again, we don't have any money to devote for this, so if it's going to happen, they're going to have to step up and help us. Financially, it's totally self-amortizing with no financial burden to the city of Avalon or its citizens. There have been ports in the news recently, primarily in Texas, where communities have gone out and invested twenty, thirty, forty million dollars in a new dock, based on the fact that a cruise line told them, you build it, it will show up. And sure enough, the cruise line showed up for maybe a year and then market conditions changed and the cruise line pulls out and the taxpayers are left holding the bag on a facility that no one's using. We told the cruise line, that's unacceptable, we cannot do that. And so that's one of the tenants of our proposal, is that absolutely will not happen and we'll explain why a little later on. So, let's go into options, regulators' reactions and how it gets paid for. Options. We looked at four different scenarios. The first one is a standard pier with fixed pier with pilings that would be built perpendicular, excuse me, parallel to the mole. And we need to talk a minute about why we're doing this at the mole. Some people have suggested, why don't you do this down Pebbley Beach Way? There are two reasons why not. The first one is, the cruise industry has told us, they want their passengers to know they've arrived at a destination within seven hundred and fifty to a thousand feet of getting off the ship. Going down Pebbley Beach Road is beyond that. I know a lot of ports do that, but they've got a fleet of buses that can be at the dock and move passengers into town quickly. We don't have that kind of infrastructure. The second reason is, I believe the city owns property up to Abalone Point and everything beyond Abalone Point is the island company. If we put a facility on island company property, the city not only doesn't get the benefit of the increased taxes and fees generated from this, they'd lose what you have now. So we need to keep this on city property. So the first option was a fixed pier built parallel to the mole. We all kind of agree, we don't like the looks of it, it extends way out into the opening of the harbor. This shot is from in front of the Pavilion Hotel. When you get into the costs of this, I know you can't read all of that, the bottom line is, this is a twenty-seven-million-dollar endeavor and would take about eighteen months of construction. We then looked at another fixed pier, but this time trying to mitigate visual problems and so we did it perpendicular to the mole, had it going out to sea. Visually, much improved. Again, from in front of the Pavilion, pretty much seeing the stern, that's about it. This was more expensive, however, because you go out into the ocean, it gets deeper, more problems, and so this was twenty-nine point six million, almost thirty million dollars. And then we looked at some new technology. At the time we started this, this was strictly on a drawing board, a real one in practice didn't exist. Now I know there are two in the world and I think there's a third one under construction. And this is a floating pier concept. The look of this is very similar to the fixed pier perpendicular to the mole, trying to mitigate visual blockage as much as we can. You pretty much see the stern of the ship. And this thing works by attaching a floating pier to some point at the mole and it consists of three, could be four or even five hinged arms that would then extend out, lie alongside the ship, be tied to the ship. The ship would be anchored on the bow end by an anchor in a mooring buoy and on the stern end to lines that are tied into the mole. So it holds it in position and then the floating pier moves up alongside of it. This is considerably less expensive, about half of the other two options at fourteen million, and only about six months' construction time. Most of the build is done off-site and the thing's towed here, maybe a month of construction on-site to actually get it up and running. And then there was a fourth option presented by Island Enterprises. This is a beautiful option, rather ambitious, but it's a sea and air terminal which would go from Abalone Point down to Pebbley Beach. Artist rendering shows a runway that could accommodate aircraft and a dock that could accommodate two cruise ships. We didn't attempt to estimate the costs of this and none were provided to us by Island Enterprises, but we did submit it to the regulators to get their impression of. So just to recap the costs, the fixed pier, parallel to the mole, was about twenty-seven million. Fixed pier perpendicular, a little over twenty-nine and a half. The seawalk floating pier at fourteen million and the sea and air terminal, not known at this point. So, we then had our consultants take all these and try to talk to regulators and get their impressions of our options. The plans were submitted to the California Coastal Commission, the State Lands Commission, and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We also submitted them to LA Regional Water Quality Control and Army Corps of Engineers, but we did not hear back from them. We did the first three. Our consultants feel that had we heard from the last two, their opinions probably would not have been significantly different than the opinions of the first three. So what'd they say? The two fixed pier options appear feasible, but there are significant mitigation measures that would have to be taken. Most likely require a full-blown environmental impact report due to a probable finding by the regulators that there are significant impacts, particularly shading, permanent shading of the ocean floor because the pier's just going to sit there forever. And the large number of piles involved in the construction of those, the regulators consider significant fill, which means they're going to disrupt ocean habitat and therefore whoever is building this project needs to compensate for that displaced habitat. And in one way, they kind of summed it up, is when the cruise ship leaves, the impacts don't. The ship may be gone, but the impacts of the pier are still there, so those need to be mitigated. With the floating pier, it received the most favorable responses. It's not without some issues, but they were the least onerous of any of the options. It may have the least native habitat and species impact. It may actually be preferable to what we do currently, which is having a ship drop anchor. And when a ship drops anchor, there can be, especially in surgey conditions, some dragging of that anchor which, again, disturbs the ocean bottom floor. So if we had a fixed anchor that the ship would tie up to a buoy on the surface, that would minimize that. They kind of liked that. And there are short-term shading issues. The shading issues are there when the ship and the floating dock are tied together, but when the ship leaves and the dock returns to its alongside-the-mole position, those issues tend to go away. So, not without issues, but certainly more favorable than the other two. With the sea and air terminal, Fish and Wildlife and the Coastal Commission were vehemently opposed to that option. And in one of their letters, they said, there is no amount of habitat compensation that could mitigate the habitat lost to the landfill required to build it. So we're kind of confident that that would be dead on arrival. So from the standpoint of the regulators, the floating pier faces the fewest objections and would require the fewest mitigations of all the options that the regulators reviewed. So what does this thing look like? This is a port in Norway and this was maiden voyage to the Queen Elizabeth to this port in Norway. First thing everybody says is, yeah, it's in a fjord and it's absolutely calm and looks like glass out there. What happens out here in our Pacific Ocean? The seawalk is built to withstand six-foot seas and so basically, the builders have told us, on any day that we can use a tender, we'll be able to use this. If it's too rough to use a tender, it's probably going to be too rough to use seawalk. So it shouldn't reduce the number of days that we're able to bring passengers ashore. And you notice it's self-operating, there's a motor actually in one of the end units and they can drive it right up to the ship. They lower the ship's gangway and off people go. It's wide enough that it can accommodate wheelchairs. People can be going to and from the ship at the same time. Plenty of options. And as time for the ship to leave, they drop a few lines, seawalk pulls away and the ship So, how do we pay for this? We again hired another consultant, PhD professor of economics at Cal State University, Long Beach, and we gave her some assumptions. We said if we were to build this, we would have to charge a wherfitch fee of ten dollars and fifty cents per passenger initially. And we've discussed this with the cruise lines as well and they understand, we build a new facility, their wherfitch fee's going to go up. They're okay, they're getting additional benefit. And we said, the two dollars and fifty cents that the city currently charges, the city needs to keep. We don't want to go backwards, so city needs to be able to keep that for whatever it currently uses it for. We actually want to add to that, so another dollar fifty would go into either the general fund or the harbor fund, depending legally where you could put it, but it would be another dollar fifty per passenger that the city would have at its disposal to do what it needed to do. Six dollars of that would go for debt reduction and interest payments and fifty cents for maintenance, so that we've got a maintenance fund being built up and we're able to take care of this new asset. So that gets us to a wherfitch fee of ten dollars and fifty cents per passenger. We asked her to assume the financing would be on business we currently had at the time, this was last year, so it's based on a hundred and sixty thousand. And again, we're on track this year for two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. And we assumed a fourteen-million-dollar debt at various interest rates. I need to point out, the fourteen million cover is the seawalk. We understand there are other improvements that need to be made to the mole and we've discussed this with the cruise industry and we think they'd be willing to guarantee fifteen or even sixteen million if that's what we needed to make this whole thing happen. But we asked for the financing based on fourteen million. At our current level of a hundred and sixty thousand passengers, depending on the interest rate, it could take us anywhere from twenty-two years to thirty, almost thirty-five years to pay that off. Like I say, we're on track right now for two-eighty-two and as long as we have two ships a year, that will continue. That gets it down to somewhere around ten years to twelve years, depending on what interest rate we might get. And the more ships, the more passengers, the faster we're able to pay that off. And again, that two-hundred-and-eighty thousand is not the ceiling. All these other cruise lines have told us that if you build this facility, we will certainly take a look at sending ships your way. And we're never going to have a ship a day, it's just not going to happen. Carnival's here, year in and year out with their two ships. Most of the additional traffic we're going to see is going to be in the fall and the spring as ships are transitioning to and from Alaska, but there's tremendous opportunity. So what's next? We hope, we've kind of presented a plan to you that this is doable, that seawalk is probably the way to go. We would like, as you move forward in figuring out your renovation plans at the mole, that you incorporate this into those plans. It just makes sense to us that when the mole's revitalized, that's the time to do everything at once. You can do it with one environmental impact report, you can get all the engineering done at the same time for everything. It makes sense and will save some money. We hope at some point you'll direct staff to develop a memorandum of understanding with our guarantors in the cruise industry and we can introduce you to those folks. And we would just like to see this done. It would be a tremendous boon for this port. There are several business folks in the audience that have been very supportive, not only verbally but by writing checks to help us get to where we are. I'd just like a show of hands from those business folks in the audience that support this project, just so you can see there are a number of folks out here that do support this. And one day, I don't want that many ships out in front of our harbor, but I sure would like to have that seawalk floating up to one of them. Questions, comments?
The maintenance of it, when you said the fifty cents for maintenance, who's actually maintaining it on it?
This would be a city-owned asset, so the city would have to maintain it just like they do harbor boats and docks and everything else. But at fifty cents a passenger, we hope we build a fund so it can do that.
Right, okay.
How long, how far out are we talking? Do we know? I mean, let's say it was approved.
How, you mean how-
How long would it take?
How long would it take?
Yeah.
If we issued a purchase order today, Councilmember Sampson, we'd have this thing in seven months.
Really? There's only two of them in the world?
No, no, let me back up on that. No, no, no. Once we got the permits, once we got the entitlements, it would be seven months in order to get it. We still have, there's some engineering at the mole that needs to be done and then the regulatory agencies need to sign off on it. Who knows how long that's going to take? But once all that is completed, to build the thing and get it installed, is about six to seven months.
But the entitlements are going to take a couple of years, probably.
Possibly.
And there's still no guarantees that the ships will come?
Oh, yeah, that's part of it. I mean, and that's why, that's why this works. Because the only way we can pay for it is if the ships come and use it, they know that. And so if they stop coming and we're not able to make the payments, they've guaranteed that and they're going to have to make the payments. And all else fails, they pull the pin at the mole and they take the thing with them to another port. But in any event, city of Avalon and its taxpayers are not going to be on the hook for this thing.
Kind of like that. Lot to discuss about this, don't we?
So, we wanted to plant the seed. I know you're not going to take any action tonight, but we sure hope you'll continue to talk to us about it and work it into your plans.
Nice presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Technology breakdown.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
Good job, Wayne.
Are there any members of the community that would like to speak on an agenda, on an item that's not on the agenda? And no action would be taken on that? Are there any members of the community that would like to speak on an agenda, on an item that's not on the agenda? And no action would be taken on that?
Hey, Jordan. Jordan Monroe, management aide. I just wanted to remind everybody that this Friday, Assemblymember Bonnie Lowenthal will be on the island. So, she's going to bring her district office services to Avalon. She'll be on hand from 11:00 AM. 11:00 AM till 4:00 PM in front of the courthouse on Sumner. And she'll be here to visit with constituents about community concerns, legislation, and all the other services available through her district office. She recognizes that Avalon residents can't easily make it to her office. So, she's bringing the office to us, which I think is a pretty awesome opportunity. So, I encourage anyone who has any questions, comments, or concerns that would go through her office to go see her right in front of the courthouse at 205 Sumner from 11 till 4 on this Friday, the 20th. If you have questions, you can call their office at (562) 495-2915. Or there's more information on our website as well.
Thank you, Jordan.
Wait, Jordan's back up. Jordan Monroe, KISL Island Radio. I just wanted to announce that we have a really awesome event going on. For the second time this year, we brought eight aspiring radio journal storytellers to the island to learn how to produce radio, like This American Life, Radiolab, radio storytelling in that sense. And last year, we interviewed 10 locals and captured their stories. And it was a pretty awesome, amazing opportunity, not only to bring all these people from across the country, but to hear these stories that we have archived now. So, we've got actually international students coming in, eight from across the country and the world, as well as locals. So, we're building up a local talent to be able to do this. And we're going to be having a listening party this Friday at 7:00 PM. You can simply tune in to KISL, which is 88.7 FM, or anywhere in the world at kislavalon.com. Or you can just head on down to the city park, Machine Gun Park, and we'll be having a little barbecue there and a listening party there. So, welcome everyone to come down and listen to these great local stories. That it's a pretty exciting opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Wayne Griffin, Chamber of Commerce. Someone mentioned 4th of July earlier. We have a challenge this year. We're having to bring pyrotechnicians to the island from the mainland for the first time in order to set off our fireworks show. And we are in desperate need of housing for four individuals. The good news is, the town is almost sold out as we speak. The bad news is, the town is almost sold out as we speak. And so, I'm desperately looking for housing for four adults. If anybody's got any ideas, please give me a call at the chamber. Thanks.
Okay, absolutely.
Yes, it is. You just got to hit me.
I don't want to hit you. I just want to remind us up here that we were all elected members of a council. There's five of us. It takes three of us to act affirmative to get something done. We can't kind of go out there and ignore the chain of command. At the March, the May 6 meeting, we passed the communication rules of city council and city staff. And primarily, it talks about how we as council members resolve issues. If a constituent brings up an issue or if we see something, you know, how do we properly resolve it to, you know, so that it's done properly? And generally, that communication has to go through the city manager or the city manager, the acting city manager when the city manager's not here. I want to remind us that these are what we adopted and these are what we need to do. We can't go out and be cowboys. It just doesn't reflect well on the council. I don't like going downtown and getting yelled at for some of our erratic behavior. And I think just remember that there's a chain of command and usually flows from us to the city manager or his designated representative unless the council has appointed one of us to take on a particular subject. That's my two cents.
And I just want to add to that, that, you know, we were elected, each of us individually, by a group of constituents. We, as individuals, speak for our constituency, which is why we're sitting here. But there are people who did not vote for us individually. Therefore, everybody has different items on their agenda. And I'm hoping tomorrow, we can put together our goals, figure out how we're going to move forward. And we need to move together, forward together and cohesively. I equally have struggled the last week and specifically the last 48 hours. A good portion of my constituency is the business community. And a good portion of those persons have spoken to me and have expressed their concerns. And I certainly second those concerns. We agreed, I want to say the early May meeting, that we would have a policies and procedures manual that we would go through sections of at each meeting. And I realize that staff has been overwhelmed, to say the least, with urgencies and fires and things that have been brought to the city manager's office. However, I think it's critical now more than ever to have that manual completed. That is the governing piece, in my opinion, that reminds the five of us what our role is, what our responsibility is, and how we move forward. So, that being said, I would respectfully request that we continue with the manual. And also, lastly, I just want to say, any single person acting in any representation of the city needs to treat others with dignity and respect. And quite frankly, I'm very disappointed in what I've heard, how I've heard people have been treated. And I think it's unfair and I certainly don't want any part of that. So, I'm asking you to please, everybody, treat each other with respect and dignity. Let's go through the proper channels. Let's do things the right way. Let's all stand back, take a deep breath, and move forward accordingly.
Others? Communications? Shall we move on to the consent calendar?
Okay. On the consent calendar this evening, you have 11, well, actually, you have 10 items. Actions will not be presented tonight. You have expenditures, warrants in the amount of $538,000, payroll, a little over $200,000, and an EFT, a little over $100,000, for a total expenditure amount of $861,000. We have a purchase of a salt water control pump panel. We have a SCADA Phase II implementation for the wastewater treatment facility. We have the proposed purchase of a shredder pump for the low-flow diverters, a gas pump system purchase for the yard, the gross receipts ordinance on its second reading, the biennial review of the city's conflict of interest code, the city's Title VI civil rights plan required for grant opportunities, the sewer system management plan, the purchase of isolation valves for Pebble Beach Pump Station. And yes, that is it. 10 items total this evening.
It's the pleasure at the council.
I just have a dumb question about number six.
Yes.
About how many gallons a year do we pump?
How many gallons a year do we pump? Does the harbor master happen to have any clue about that? We can find that out. I don't know, but this is going to be something that would make it much easier to tell you that.
But this is for the?
This is for two reasons. This is for tracking and for security.
For the stuff we pump up at Falls Canyon?
Yes, yes.
So, up to this point, there's been no way to keep track of how much gas we use besides the camera?
Right. We have a camera and we're able to do manual calculations. And we have supervisory controls, of course, but this is a much more regimented process. So, I would shy away from no controls because that's not accurate, but I would say the controls are manual. This is a more responsible approach.
Absolutely.
It's the pleasure.
Move staff on 2 to 11?
Is there a second?
A second.
Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay. Well, if you will pardon us for a little bit while we go into a closed session?
We're going into a closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. This is significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph 2 of 54956.9. This concerns the question on the legality of the urgency ordinance that was, statements that were made earlier today to me concerning questioning the legality of it by business owners, representatives in the city.
Casey, in a little bit. Deadly, roll the music.
And determination that adoption of the ordinance is categorically exempt. So, I guess what I'd probably like, we do have written communication on this particular item. So, perhaps I'll just give a brief overview of the staff report, read the written communication, and then turn it back over to you?
Sure.
Okay. So, this is a proposed urgency ordinance, which means that it requires a four-fifth vote of the council. And if it did receive that, it would take effect immediately. At the direction of the mayor and Councilmember Sampson, we have prepared this for council consideration. The ordinance proposes, in sum, the four main things. That all new construction, wherein there is no water allocation granted by SCE, will not be accepted by the City of Avalon unless a hardship is determined by the city council until such time that either the water rationing has ceased and/or a new source has been identified. Number two, that in general, the city adopts all CPUC tariffs related to water rationing into the code so that the city is able to use its own police powers. At this time, only a portion of the CPUC tariffs related to water rationing are included in the code. Number three, that the city actively strives to preserve water, going above and beyond what the CPUC tariffs require, and adopts strict penalties and fines to ensure compliance. And then, lastly, that specified water use restrictions be observed continually as best practices, whether there is a drought or not. So, I think that's the sum of what we're proposing this evening. And if you'd like, I do have written communication on this item.
If you just state that real quick. Wait, yes.
Okay. We have written communication dated June 16, 2004, from Mr. Pete Edwards of Fine Line Construction, who, in sum, is opposed to agenda item number 12, considering the impact on construction and jobs on the island. And I believe that you all have a copy of this letter. I don't know if I need to read it in totality.
No.
Okay.
I would just add, from a factual point, we've had several study sessions and meetings, public meetings with Edison discussing the various phases of water rationing. We're in phase one. We may be in phase two. The governor has declared a drought. And so, there is a problem with water in Avalon that's been discussed. Those discussions would be part of the council's background and consideration of this ordinance. And so, with that, we can answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Would the, would the community like to come up and speak on this first?
Ooh, someone I've heard from recently.
Honorable mayor, city council, it's nice standing here right now. I would like to commend you for taking on the water issue. I could sit here for hours tonight and recite item per item per item of the mismanagement that Edison has had in this utility. I will save you that time with just nods from the five of you. I think that you've recognized that the utility is mismanaged. To cut water use by 25% within a community that is doing its darn best and has for years, and its track record proves that we're trying to reduce the amount of water we're using. Is Edison even here tonight? I find that daunting and embarrassing. I would like this council to do three things. One, form a committee that understands the management of the water district, that spends some time there. Item two, get to your state legislators, get to Sacramento, and get before the PUC, and get immediate relief from the regulators that prevent and slow down the production of a well and the expansion of D cell. Now you, the five of you, are solving our water problems. Let's not put Band-Aids on this. Our community right now has a cancer and Edison's handing out placebos. I think that's a mistake and I leave it up to the five of you to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Griffin, I would echo everything Mr. Kennedy just said. In reading this ordinance, I just find all kinds of issues that I have with this thing, and just a couple of them. In the first part of this, after all the striked-out language, when you first start talking about what you're going to do, there's no timeframe on this. It's forever. It doesn't say as long as we're rationing. It just says, "This is going to happen for the rest of our lives." I've got a real problem with that. My biggest problem is several places in this document, you exempt the City of Avalon from having to comply with this. I'm sorry. If you're going to impose these kinds of restrictions on the rest of the community, why would you exempt the city? There can only be two reasons. Either it's too expensive or it's too burdensome. And in either case, if it's too expensive or too burdensome for you, why do you think it's not for us? It's one of the things that in Sacramento drives me up the wall. They pass all these mandates all the time and then exempt the state from having to comply with them. Don't you dare do that to the citizens of Avalon.
Just couldn't sit there. He had to get up.
Mike Flynn, Hamilton Pacific and Crystal Hill Development. Couple things that we did. I've had numerous conversations as well over the last couple of weeks with everybody. From a standpoint of construction water, we kind of set out, tried to figure out what we could do about it. We realized, regardless of management and how we got here, how can we lessen the burden through construction practices on the community and make it a benefit? So, what I did was, is we got together with LA Power and Water and we went and met with Catalina Freight Lines and coordinated an effort. There's a fire hydrant directly across the street from Catalina Freight Lines in Wilmington. And then, what I did is, is we went to LA Power and Water and we pulled a construction meter for a year. So, that's now going to be in place. It gets installed on Friday. If you notice today out in the museum, there's two water totes that are sitting out on the street in front of the project. I, my company purchased 120 of those water totes, which we'll be using for all of our construction projects, you know, from here forward until we get out of this. The, in construction, the highest use of water occurs with concrete use, concrete and stucco, mostly concrete. For every yard poured of concrete, there's about 31 gallons of water being consumed. We have, for example, just on the museum project alone, about 1,100 yards of concrete left to pour. That's roughly about 33,000 gallons of water. That 120 water totes will handle that 33,000 gallons of water. So, we won't use a drop of island water on the remaining construction for the museum. That will apply to Hamilton Cove, anything else that we do up in Triana, and any of the other projects that we're talking about until we get through this. The, with the well, or with the well, with the meter that's on that hydrant, we're only going to use it very short periods of time. So, I offer it back to the community. If anybody else would like to have access to water fairly close to the freight lines and be able to ship it across, I'm currently working with both Chuck and Rich to try to come up with a program so that it's affordable for somebody to send it over. One of those totes, in that 275 gallons of water, costs about $4. It doesn't cost anything. What costs is the shipping it over. And if you were going to pay normally PUC rates, it would be close to about $300 for that tote. But they're talking about discounting that. And again, as long as the water's just reimbursed, I don't care who uses it when we're not. So, I just offer that back.
Well, kudos to you. I mean, that's brilliant. You also mentioned something about potable water.
These same totes, these particular totes, for construction water, again...
These same totes, these particular totes, for construction water, again, it's just construction water. The totes that I found were used for a sugar water syrup, they're food totes is what they are. So they were used one time, they're brand new. What we do is we rinse them out, because there's a water soluble sugar content that's in them. And then, once we do that, we just replace it with normal water. For potable water, there's a different tote. But they're out there, and I haven't priced them out. This all happened over the last four or five days, but they're out there, and it is another viable option to do it. And then we brought them over today, they're very easy to handle, you know, with a forklift, and, you know, we brought them right into town, there was no problem at all. And you can stack them four high as well. So if anybody looks at the museum site, can't see the museum right now, it's because we'll be stacking those all along the street out in front, so.
Thank you very much for taking, taking it, taking the bull by the horn. That's excellent. Go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
Jerry Dunn, 133 up for terrace. I just, I'm only going to go, there's quite a few areas in this that I have a conflict with, but there's just one in particular that I'll bring up right now. And it's item two of, what section is this? Six dash 6.14. It says that no use of potable water for any construction purposes, such as consolidation of backfill, dust control, mixing of the concrete, or other construction-related uses is allowed. That would basically mean anything. I mean, if you painted and had to clean your paintbrushes, you couldn't do that. You'd be in violation. If you wanted to mix water with thinset to apply tile, you'd be in violation. If you wanted to, obviously, do stucco, and you wanted to use water, you'd be in violation. I think that there needs to be, for some projects that are currently being done, there needs to be some flexibility with this. I do believe that there's, you know, again, like Bob mentioned, I commend that, you know, people are taking this on wholeheartedly to try to help us with our water issue. But I think you're doing it on the backs of the construction projects that are going on right now, and there's a lot of people in town that are working, doing these projects right now, and you're going to stop that. If this is not amended to allow some of these things to be done, I do believe that consolidation of backfill, dust control, maybe some of those things can be done with salt water. But when you get into where you can't use water for stucco, for drywall, for thinset, for even painting, that's, I think, reaching a little bit too far. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Other comments?
Bruce Furtig, 329 Catalina. You know, I just find the whole thing in general rather alarming that for all of these proposed changes and all the implications of all of the things that are proposed here, that there's somehow an urgency that needs to have it done in one sitting tonight. First of all, I'm not going to go into the details, but I will say this. I worked, I have not, I've not drawn a paycheck from Edison for five and a half years, and even then, I wasn't their spokesman. So I'm not now. But I can tell you this much about my experience as an Edison employee, going through these various stages of water rationing. And it's something that everybody out there hated. The managers who were taking the bulk of the hits hated it. I hated getting the phone calls in the control room from people who had restrictors and were getting a little dribble of water. There was nothing about it that was pleasant. The utility doesn't like to do that. They like to provide their service. They don't like to restrict their service, and they don't like to put a whole bunch of rules on top of providing their service, which is water to the public here. And, you know, not to say they have been flawless in their execution by any means, but when it gets down to administering rationing, it's a lousy job. And it seems like you want to take it on yourselves, and I'm here to advise you. You don't want the job. Let them be the bad guys. You don't want to be the water cops. You don't want to be the ones going around, "Aha, you've got a dribble coming out of your hose bib here." It's just not a job you really want to do, and plus, you've made it on steroids. Instead of phase one happening at 600 acre feet, from the way I read this thing, we're talking about permanent phase one. I just don't think the city really wants to put itself in the position of being the water cop. There's a lot of things wrong with how things have gone here, but this is, this is much worse than the current situation.
Paul?
Oh, graphic aids?
Paul De Meyer, 201B, Cayo del Sol, here tonight, speaking on behalf of the Santa Catalina Island Company. The Santa Catalina Island Company and its subsidiaries fully support water conservation efforts and encourage all our employees, tenants, and customers to be mindful of best management practices in order to conserve this precious resource. I had a couple of rhetorical questions that I was going to ask, but a number of them have already been stated by the folks that preceded me up here on this podium. So I wanted to ask just a couple of questions, and then talk about the ordinance itself. First question is, if the city is interested in better enforcement of existing rules and regulations, why not either discuss this with Edison formally and take your complaints, if you don't get satisfaction, directly to the California Public Utilities Commission? And secondly, if the city wants to get into the water ownership and/or regulation business, the issue should be evaluated in great detail with careful thought and consideration given to each particular matter. The discrepancies between the current rules and regulations and the proposed ones in the ordinance should be eliminated, and the new regulations clarified so that there are not competing sets of rules. I'd like to bring to your attention a few specific issues raised by the proposed ordinance, but what I have here is just a very simple chart that compares the existing CPUC tariffs on water regulations in all stages. No restrictions, stage one, stage two, stage three, and stage four, with all the ones that are in black and white being areas that are consistent with your proposed ordinance and the existing regulations. The ones that are highlighted in yellow have differences of when they occur or what has occurred, and the ones in pink are regulations that are not even addressed, that are currently addressed by the CPUC. For the benefit of the audience, it's a very simple chart, again, all the stages of rationing, and a whole list of issues. And bottom line is, there's about a third of them that are currently consistent with existing regulations, another third that have differences and therefore competing policies, and then another third that the current proposed ordinance doesn't even address. And those that aren't addressed include irrigation for food-producing gardens, golf courses, commercial customer usage, residential customer usage, hotel customer usage, and as was mentioned previously, it has the city being exempt from all these measures, other than to implement reasonable measures. So just very quickly, order of magnitude, those are some of the concerns that we have. Some specific questions I'd like to bring up are as follows. In the proposed ordinance, there is no definition of potable water. Is it the intent of the city to conserve drinking water as currently provided by Edison from the Middle Ranch Aquifer and Wells and the Thompson Reservoir? Is the intent to include Avalon's desalinization plant at Pebley Beach, which is not currently part of the safe annual yield calculation? If the D cell plant is not included in the water system, can a customer purchase needed amounts of D cell water directly from Edison for use in various purposes, as opposed to having to go to Long Beach and get it out of a Long Beach fire hydrant? Does the city intend to allow use of water provided from other sources, including mainland water sources, as was mentioned, as an alternative, as long as the source is not the drinking water supplied by Edison for this community? Will private desalinization systems be allowed for production of non-potable water? Will private graywater systems be allowed for recycling of and production of non-potable water? Can an Edison customer drill a private well in a separate aquifer and water system on Catalina and use that water for private purposes? The new rules do not address numerous other facilities and businesses in Avalon that use potable water for various purposes. These include snorkeling and diving operations that use fresh water to rinse off wet suits and equipment, laundry facilities, public restrooms and beach showers, drinking fountains, restaurant dishwashing, hotel guest bathrooms, et cetera. How will these be addressed? Under the new rules, residents will be prohibited at all times and forever from cleaning their patios, windows, floors, and other hard surfaces using potable water. Will residents be allowed to use private D cell or graywater systems for these purposes? Will the higher salt content byproduct of private D cell systems be allowed in our sewer system and processed by the wastewater treatment plant? Will the byproduct need to be mixed with graywater to dilute the salt content? What specifically is meant by recycled water, the use of which is allowed by the proposed ordinance? Under the new rules, commercial washing of buses, boats, trailers, and other vehicles is not allowed at any time, except at a commercial fleet vehicle or boat washing facility operated at a, quote, "fixed" location, where, quote, "equipment is properly maintained to avoid wasteful use," unquote. What is specifically meant by those words in quote? What is a fixed location, and what equipment, and what is the proper maintenance of that? In stage one, what is the definition of a commercial car wash that requires 50% of the potable water to be recycled? Does this apply to fixed-location premises only, or can it be a temporary location? It was mentioned previously that in stage one, under the proposed ordinance, the use of potable water for construction is prohibited. And it's generally known that mixing fresh water with mortar, stucco, cement, et cetera, is essential to the construction process. Jerry mentioned that specifically. However, other than for major new building structures and their foundations, these activities generally do not use a substantial amount of water. The new museum is a brand-new facility with a substantial foundation. It uses a lot of water for that purpose. Most other small projects do not require that. Will the council be flexible and consider alternatives that allow these types of uses if they are nominal? Will the council consider a differentiation in construction uses, such as backfill, consolidation, or dust control, for which salt water could be utilized in lieu of fresh water? In stage one, no potable use of water is allowed for filling or refilling of spas, hot tubs, pools, and decorative fountains. Does this apply to a resident's personal bathtub or spa? And if so, how will it be policed? Does this apply to hotel rooms that have Jacuzzi spas in a guest room? And if so, how will that be policed? Under the new rules, the use of potable water for outdoor landscape is limited to the evening and nighttime hours between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. In stage one, the use of potable water for these purposes via hoses or sprinkler systems is limited to two hours in the evening and two hours in the morning. Large landscape areas and their systems are typically controlled by timers which rotate sequentially through specific areas, but which may require longer than two hours to complete a full cycle. Will the council be flexible and consider different language in the ordinance to reflect a standard that restricts each area to receive water for a not-to-exceed maximum of two hours, but allow the cycle to continue? Similarly, in stage two, it's limited to one hour. Again, will the council be flexible and consider language to reflect a different standard that meets the need for the test, but not the specific language that is currently in the ordinance? In stage two, the use of potable water on Avalon's golf course is prohibited, other than for greens and tee boxes. Is the council aware that the golf course is currently irrigated by wells which are not part of Edison's drinking water system? My closing comment is, rather than portraying this as an emergency and focusing on fines and penalties, shouldn't we be focusing on crafting policy that is thoughtful and backed by fact and not hyperbole, and balance the ecological and economic needs of our community? This will require a process that will involve many stakeholders and take more time, but we will certainly end up with a better result. Thank you for letting me speak.
No, thank you very much.
Chris Wilhelm, Catalina Island Company, 150 Metropole. I just had a few, few more points to ask the council to consider. I'd be interested to hear a discussion about, looking at Mr. De Meyer's exhibit there, where the proposed ordinance matches the SCE tariff. Wondering why the need for the second set of duplicative regulations. We've all talked about or heard stated today that there's some difficulty or trouble interpreting the existing tariff. You're importing that same language, so aren't you importing some of those same problems that you now have to figure out how to interpret? Where the ordinance would differ from the tariff, won't that create some confusion with two sets of rules? Whose rules guide? If one are more stringent than the other, is that the one that guides? So just some conflict in the two different sets of policies, even if they both can be legally enforced. Then I look at the section where the city chose not to import any language from the tariff in certain sections, and I wonder why the city chose certain sections to regulate an important import, and chose not to address other sections of sort of highly consumptive sort of water users, and left that to Edison. So is the city saying that Edison's doing a good job regulating portions of the tariff, and not such a good job regulating other portions of the tariff? And if so, how'd you come to those conclusions? And wouldn't mind hearing a discussion, discussion about that. Just to sort of pick up on something Mr. Flynn said, the island company started about a year ago looking at its water usage, and particularly irrigation, because irrigation's a consumptive use of water. We looked at all of our, all of our properties and all of the areas where we have active irrigation, particularly Descanso Beach, the Golf Gardens, two areas of, you know, where we do have some irrigation going, and have been on an active program of replacing sprayheads, turning those into much more efficient drip irrigation systems, and we've seen significant drops in both of those locations in the use of water. And we continue to evaluate all of our properties, and will continue to do the same thing across all of our portfolio of properties. Mr. Flynn and I have been talking for the last week about what Mike presented to you tonight. We agreed to split the cost of the water meter over in Wilmington, and we're also purchasing, just finished purchasing 120 water totes as well, following sort of Mike's great sort of research that he did, and we're also making commitments that on our active construction projects, that we're going to import construction water as well. You know, as Mr. De Meyer said, we wholeheartedly support the idea of managing that precious resource, and want to be a stakeholder and want to be a participant in that dialogue and in that conversation. We have an opportunity as a community to become a model for, a statewide model for California on how to do this right. But as Paul said, that'll take some time, that'll take some deliberation, that'll take a lot of stakeholders participating in the process, and we look forward to working with the council and the rest of the community to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hannah Havers, Cali Dussel, and owner of Caffey at Metropole. Today, I spent some time reviewing the report that was prepared for LAFCO in 2001 that had some interesting statistics about... some interesting statistics about water use. And what I took away from that, and if you go back and look at it, I think you'll see that by and large, people that live here are already the best water conservationists around. All of us know what we need to do, and most of us, by and large, are doing it. There's not a lot more that you're going to eke out by threatening people that they're going to be in trouble if they don't use water usefully, because I think all of us do. I think the more troubling thing here, and maybe the elephant in the room, is that the real use of water is growth. And as you approve more and more projects, particularly water-intensive use projects, you're naturally going to cut into the amount of water that's available. And there are certain assumptions that are made in the tariffs that were created in 1977 and, for the most part, have really not been looked at regarding who's entitled to what kind of water uses. And what's troubling is that the water allocations by Edison are made on a first-come, first-served basis and also entail all sorts of arcane and secret, non-public findings of credits and transfers and historical rights to use water that none of us are able to see or know about but are affecting all of us in many, many important ways. And as I was alluding to, in terms of usage, the tariffs allot about 30% more water for a hotel room than they do for somebody who lives here. That may be something that we do want, but maybe after 40 years, it makes sense to go back and look at that. And I think the PUC would welcome the opportunity to do it. And lastly, I'm just going to point out, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but Edison is trying to sell the water utility. And the more water they say that they're going to be providing and selling, the better chances they have of selling it. They've also had some difficulties in terms of maintaining water-creating facilities, spending a lot more money than was necessary when those things should have been done. But I have to say, when I was asked to draft a similar ordinance back in 2000, in some ways, it's mainly window dressing because people really are out there conserving. So I applaud Paul De Meyer's mention of RO units. Is there some kind of technology that we should be using and looking to do something positive to create more water as opposed to just accepting cisterns? I don't know. There's got to be some way that we could expand our water. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I don't know who wants to start this. You want me to start it?
You got him here.
Sure.
I'll come after you.
Okay. As you know, three of us sitting up here ran on the biggest issue facing the community of Avalon, which was water. Water, water, water. We are three new people, and by God, we have to start somewhere. This is a wake-up call to tell you that we, as a council, I guess, are very serious about looking at the problem. We are very disillusioned with Edison, and Pam spoke eloquently about that. I just have a little statement here, but because of our lack of faith and trust in Southern California's Edison's management of our water resources, and had it not been for their lack of planning throughout the years, we would not be in this predicament. In 1975, some of you know Edison laid pipes for reclamation and reported it would be online at a meeting in Pepperdine by May or June of 1976. They didn't complete the project, and the pipes have been under our streets for over 38 years. Edison shut down the desal plant. Their shutting down also set us back another couple hundred acre feet, maybe more. And Edison has not levied fines for violators of Stage 1 water rationing. You know, we're all leery of the water allocations and transferring water from one project to another, and we must require transparency of Edison regarding this allocation process. And the sad thing is, just because someone has an allocation, there may be a time where there is no water. And if the water cannot come out of the spigot, it doesn't matter how much someone has allocated. With regard to El Nino, the scientists are saying now that it might be El Wimpo. So we cannot rely on Edison relying on El Nino. And as the ordinance reads, in a way, it's a little wimpy. We did incorporate their tariffs, and perhaps not going after the little guy is the way to go about this. However, the mixing of cement was the big thing that came up when we were thinking about this the last couple of weeks. And we put this together quick. It's an urgency because water is urgent. The lack of water is an urgent issue. And thank God for Mike Flynn, and hopefully others can follow. If he can get 160 totes, why can't someone get one tote? I mean, I think we all have to bite the bullet a little bit. Edison contacted me today and asked me to pull the ordinance because, in line with what somebody was saying, we need our fines to be in alignment and so that there's not double fines. So if we go out and find somebody and then they go out and find somebody, what are we going to do? And no, the city doesn't want to use, we're talking about how are we going to enforce this? We don't want to use our code enforcement and law enforcement and everybody else to have to go out there and Big Brother going out and looking after people. I mean, yes, we... This is a very emotional issue, you know? We don't want to have to play cop to anybody in the city of Avalon. But I think, had this not come up, I mean, maybe Mike would have proceeded in this way, which we appreciate. But I think it's just, again, saying that this is urgent, and I think it's also saying, if this doesn't pass tonight, I really don't care. But I want you to know that we do care about what happens to the city, and we're going to work diligently at all those kinds of options that you're looking at and working with the island company and the stakeholders. But it's just, we just want to show you that we're serious and we care about our town. And yes, how you're going to solve the saunas problems and the Jacuzzis and all of that, I don't know. You all have monumental tasks before you. But if Stage 1 goes in in August and we continue...
Stage 2.
Stage 2, I mean. And what? Stage 3 is one or two months away from that? And yes, it is a shame Edison is not here every two weeks to give us an update and tell us what they're doing. That is sinful. And I know Joe asked Hilda to be here tonight, and there was Edison reps on the island today, but where are they? So again, I know of all your concerns, and perhaps if we worked with an attorney for six or eight hours and it still didn't come out right, so what the hell? What can I tell you? I just thank you for all of your comments, and I know it's a very emotional and tough issue for all of you, and we're going to support you. But it's scary to think that everything we do is going to take two and three and four years to get accomplished when we don't have that time. And if El Wimpo shows up, what the heck are we going to do? That's all I have to say.
The biggest issue I have is using the urgency ordinance as a media to get to the point. I mean, urgency has specific rules and regulations behind it. It means it's got to get passed in the first reading. It doesn't get amended. I think a lot of people point out there's a whole bunch of flaws in this. I'm not sure why we want, the city wants to be the water police. The tariff already exists. Let's pull Edison to the fire and talk to the PUC and get them to enforce their existing tariff. Why do we need to become the water police in place of them? Because we can't get it to meters. I mean, it's just, I don't see the urgency for it. As a discussion point, it would have been a fine thing to sit down and have a discussion about water and about possible restrictions and such like that. But if we burn six or seven hours at $255 an hour... We need to use our resources prudently too, and I think the prudent way would be to have a discussion about water and possible things we could do to fix it, recognizing what exists on the books with the PUC, recognizing that Edison is not enforcing the tariffs, they're not going out being water police, which they're supposed to be according to the tariff. And I think this is a golden opportunity for us to look into the possibility of creating a municipal water district so that we become the guys that are in charge of the water and we're not looking to an outside subject, outside agency.
Very good point.
Thank you.
The little people in Avalon, the people who work, the people who allocated seven gallons of water a day, like myself, for July and August, seven gallons a day for me and my son. There's a lot of other people in the audience that have the same. It's really hard to see all this water being dumped in these foundations. So with that said, I'd like to just say thank you to Mike Flynn for stepping up and bringing in that idea. The whole idea of this ordinance, my name is on it. So I will be the first one to say this is a learning lesson for me. We were criticized, saying, oh, you'll never get the island company and Edison and the Conservancy and the city to sit down in one sitting. And we were criticized for that. You'll never do it. Well, we're doing it. The only people who ain't here, like Bob said, Mr. Kennedy said, was Edison. Yeah, where are they? I talked to Hilda Delgado, she's Public Relations, begged her to have a representative here. Not here. I talked to Ron Height, Regional Manager, District Manager, begged him to have somebody here, some kind of an expert to explain the tariffs and the distribution and everything to us. Not here. I called his boss. I called Tony Edison, Regional Manager, begged him, have somebody here to explain some things to us, to better allow our community to understand what's going on with the water supply. Basically, what we wanted to do is bring people to the table so we can understand what the water supply problem is. Since my name is on this, I'll be the first one to admit, thank you guys for coming here and speaking your piece, Mr. De Meyer, Jerry Dunn, Wayne. We're not beyond fault, okay? We're trying to settle this issue, okay? We're really, really passionate about it because we're up here, the five of us are representing anywhere from 5,000 to 25,000 people that are going to be here. And we don't want to cut their vacation experience to something because we have a water problem. So we're trying to cut that off before it happens. That's what this is all about. So yes, this thing needs a lot of work. We're going to get on it. We're going to be on it. We will have a sit-down with Edison. We've got a score to settle with them because we do need to purchase the water rights and the distribution rights. And we will understand this a lot better, and everyone will get their fair share. But right now, we don't understand who gets what, how much of it, and where it comes from. And that's not right. We should have somebody from Edison sitting in here today. Like I said, they're running scared right now. The city resolve this issue? It's by people like Good Samaritans, like all you folks who are sitting out here and the ones that are listening, that are frightened right now. They don't know what they're going to do next month when Stage 2 kicks in. I want to ask Edison's a question. What tariffs prohibit you from investing in a more modern and efficient desalination system, storage systems, reclamation systems, and increasing the safe annual yield? What tariffs prohibit you from doing that? They're not here to answer that. But you know what? We're going to get to the bottom of it because we're going to have our sit-down with them. But you know what? We're only human, and this was at the top of all of our platforms, and so was getting us all to sit down. And I can't tell you how much it means to see Mr. Harold and Mr. De Meyer and Mr. Dunn and Mr. Griffin and Mr. Kennedy in the room and everybody who cares. Because you guys are just the faces for thousands and thousands of people in this community that are wondering what's going on. Mike Flynn, he spearheaded the fact that he's bringing in those huge containers. I can't tell you how grateful we are that you're stepping out and you're showing us that you care so much that you're going to lead the way and set the example for everyone else. And I want everybody to know, and all the construction sites, what this wasn't easy for us to do, to even propose this. Are you kidding? You guys are my family. You're my neighbors. You're people I live next to. You're people I work for. I don't want to do this. We're looking at a big picture here. We're not looking at something small. You're all experts at whatever you do. But I'll tell you what, I really appreciate the island company for going ahead and buying your own containers as well. And that's going to help us out just a ton. I think every little thing helps out. But when we're turning off the water when we're brushing our teeth but seeing those thousands of gallons go down into the cement, it's really hard for me to justify, okay, we're just going to let this go on. You stop brushing your teeth with the water running, but it's okay for people to go ahead and build as much as they want. So that's where the basis of this comes in, all right? So that's where I was going with this. Pretty soon, we're going to tour the Edison's facility. We're going to hold them to task on this, and yes, that's what we want to do. This is going to bring us to owning these water rights and owning the distribution rights, you, us, the people of Avalon, so that we all have our fair share. We increased the desalination plant. We put in a reclamation system. We dredge our top water storage areas all through the island. There's a lot of things we can do and a lot of things that we're going to do into the future. And I'll be the first one to admit I'm not perfect and I'm not right, and my name is on this. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate the education I got tonight, but we're going to be on this big time. Thank you guys very much for being here.
And I agree with Joe. I agree that without this even happening tonight, this being put out on the agenda, people have already stepped up forward to do stuff, Mike Flynn, the island company, without even a vote or anything on it. So people are already doing stuff. The contractors and everything, they're answering all our questions. The main thing, like Joe said, it was all the contractors, water going here, projects going here. That's what a lot of the people are seeing. They're not really sure where everything's coming from. I think, again, to me, it sounds like Edison. We need to do a little more meetings with Edison, like Joe says, find out exactly what's going on. I did look on some of their tariffs and their website and stuff. I was kind of shocked to find out that Edison writes the tariffs and the CUP votes them in. I thought that was kind of interesting on my part. But again, things are happening because everybody's here, because we brought this to everybody's attention. So with that being said, I hope everybody continues to do that. Again, like Joe says, we all make mistakes. Everybody does this. I like what's going on here. I like everybody's energy that's up here that's doing this. And I hope we all continue to work together to make this work because the water is our main issue regardless of what happens.
You know, a good point was made that we can take those containers that Mr. Flynn has over here, and he offered all the information that we need to have those containers. We can put those on all the job sites if somebody needs. You can use as much of that water as you want, washing your hands, washing your brushes. I guess it can even be drinking water as well. You can drink it. But the bottom line is, you can have this, we all can be served better by actually bringing in water. But as you know, the whole of Southern California is going through the biggest drought that we have seen in 135 years on record. So let's just keep doing what we can. We, as a city council, are going to get back to this. We're going to use you as advisors to help us get along and do this better. We're going to move forward with this, is what I'm saying. This document definitely needs to be upgraded, and there's a lot of flaws in it, and we'll get to the bottom of that. But if we wouldn't have had this meeting, we wouldn't have figured all that stuff out. So congratulations to you guys for participating in a system that really works. It's called democracy, and we're doing it right here, right now.
Cindy, would you like to add something?
Oh, my goodness. Fundamentally, I have an issue with shouldering the responsibility of the water on construction and development. It is a community. We all live in this community, and shouldering the burden of water usage on one area of this community, I believe, is very flawed. We are a resort environment. Upgrades need to happen. We have a tremendous amount of homeowners in our community that have the right to do upgrades to their homes. A lot of these older cottages, these homeowners have the right to make changes to their property, to upgrade their property, to rebuild, to build foundations. And yes, it does take water for concrete. Let's be fair and say, the highest usage of water in construction is concrete. However, if you actually go forward and find out how much and find some education in that, you will also find that for building a new home on the flats, replacing a cottage, building a foundation, the amount of water that's needed in order to make that happen is far less than having that home occupied by a family of four during that construction period. So for me, I believe that rather than... period. So for me, I believe that rather than bringing forward emergency ordinances and, oh, my God, the sky is falling with anvils, we could better utilize everybody's time by coming to the table saying, okay, you know what? Concrete takes a lot of water, okay? We can use agricultural water. We could use reclaimed water from the treatment plant. Why are we not looking at those types of options that are very viable options to solve the amount of water that's needed for construction? Now, we're not thinking solution-based, and that's how I really want to go at things like this. I want us to have a conversation and say, hey, look, we recognize that we have a real problem coming in two months, three months, four months, whatever it ends up being. We possibly won't have El Nino. All of these things spark the conversation. But I don't want us to be running around crazy enacting emergency ordinances. I want us to think smart. I want us to talk to each other. We've all got good ideas. We've got a lot of people out there in the audience right now with great ideas. And I want to approach it in that way. You know, I'm not really sure how much education has been done on how much water is being used other than concrete. But for all of the other construction uses, you're asking somebody, Joe, I'm asking you from now on, when you go to clean your paintbrushes, I want you to buy your water from Vons to clean your paintbrushes. That's not fair to put that on one section of the community. So water rationing means that we ration for everybody, that we all take a part in this. So we make alternate decisions on how we do things. So if we were to ask the rest of the community to, construction to stop, so to speak, for concrete or whatnot, the city as a whole needs, the city, the business of the city, needs to set the first example, okay? No more watering Joe Machado Field. We're done, okay? No more watering any grass in the city of Avalon that the city owns. No more. No more watering the cemetery. Right? Why should we be using water? Why are we taking water for landscaping away from the people, for the city's use, and asking the rest of the community to take that burden? That's the issue that I have with this, is that set the example. And we need to start thinking solution-based, not thinking emergency ordinances. There are some good points in the ordinance. There are some best practices that we can enact, but not as an emergency. Let's bring it to the table. Let's look at the CPUC tariff. That wasn't in our packet. We're talking about adopting things that aren't even in our packet. So I have an issue with that. I want that education. I want that information before I'm asked to make that kind of decision. If we, as a team up here, decide that we want to move forward with looking at some best practices, working together with the community, working together with stakeholders, hey, I'm all for it. But I'm not for this, and I'm not for the emergency of this. I'm for all of us working together.
I just want to say, you know, when we started the campaign trail, there was a lot of people in town that said, you know, we need to do like we did in '77 and put on a no-growth moratorium, completely stopping growth until we have the water issues dealt with. Because with continued growth, if we don't have the other water supply, an additional water supply, once all these things go online, here we are in trouble again. So this might have been a bad move. I'm not going to apologize for it. Because I think, as we're setting our priorities and we need to have that other priorities meeting, you know, the water is not on the table anymore, right? Because you got to ask for it. So if this is what takes us to make sure, just like we're dealing with other things, we're either taking care of them or not, if this is the impetus to get us going and meeting and getting everybody talking, then I think we did our job. And I'm sorry if I spent city's money on Campbell's time. But this is a learning curve for us, and I'm sure he has been called by other council members over the last two and a half years. So I don't think he's the only one who's rung up a little bill. Okay.
In light of the discussion, both from the dais and from the public, I'd like to move to table this.
Table it? Sounds like it's tear it up, but...
You could tear it up. I just know it just gets rid of it.
Okay, okay. Sure, Mr. Kennedy, come on back.
I'm not here to argue the point of tabling it. I am here to argue, to create solutions, create a committee, lobby our representatives to release the burden of the process that it takes to expand D-SAL, to put another well in the ground. I mean, if Edison claims that that's going to take 18 months to two years to do, in their mind, that's what we need to avoid. It's the resource. We've been lacking the resource for decades. It's not the concrete. And Edison has no intention of spending any more capital when their intention is to sell the utility. It's not in their best interest. Ron stood here at the podium and shared with the entire community that it is not in his stockholder's best interest to spend more money on a resource. It's better to be in rationing.
25% of the time.
Right. And we've been in rationing more than 25% of the time. So it's a management issue. Get together with Edison. Get them to the table. Fix the tariff. Get to Sacramento. Get some regulatory relief and get a well in D-SAL running. Eight years ago, Verywell brought a product to Edison. It was a running, operating D-SAL plant that they refused to put on the premises. We're still involved in litigation as a result of their lack of action. It's time for them to act. Thank you.
Ken, thank you, Bob. Try that again?
I'd like to move to table this urgency ordinance.
Is there a second?
Is there a second? I don't know.
Second to table?
Maybe I could just, if I could just interject one comment that's been brought up a couple of times. It should be pointed out that the city is part of a consortium of stakeholders that will be meeting with Supervisor Canaby on Thursday to talk about fast-tracking the permitting process for the deep-water well. So we are actively engaged in that, among other efforts, trying. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work going on trying to address this from a number of different angles.
Then we're back to a finite water source, a deep-water well. We have a whole ocean out there, and I think we ought to think seriously about expanding our desalination plant. But we have to purchase the water rights. That's the only way we can do it. Anyway, what does tabling do?
It means that we don't take any action on it.
This particular ordinance is taken off and will not be voted on for passage tonight.
Oh, absolutely.
That's a second. It's been moved and seconded.
Well, I mean, there's obviously flaws in it, and we have to fix them. Yeah. But this was an educational period tonight. This is what we were elected to do, is get to the bottom of these issues. And this is great. And if it wasn't for the public interjecting and bringing their concerns to the table, we'd be in a stalemate.
Okay, let's go. It's been moved and absolutely seconded.
Yeah, seconded.
Any other comments? Okay, call for the vote. All ayes. See? See how we're all in agreement? Thank you all for coming. And I believe we are now going to close, before we go to close session.
In acknowledgement of ex-Mary Kennedy's, I would like to direct staff to look into forming a municipal water district, to see what we can do to push Edison to enforce existing tariffs, to see what we can do to get Edison and the permitting process sped up, to do whatever we can to help Edison increase the water on the island.
And look at reclamation and additional storage.
I think calling for a committee would be a good idea as well.
There is a group of people that I'm going to hopefully be getting with next week, and reclamation folks that are really interested in reclamation. And Joe, you can be part of that if you like, but there's a desire to look into that as well.
Reclamation is good, but we need water in order to feed the reclamation plant. So we need a fresh water source, finite fresh water source, not something that's, we need an infinite fresh water source as opposed to a finite water source. So, yes, I'm into it. But before the reclamation can be put into place, we need water first. We need to find it.
So you got all these direction. And Wayne?
Could I just ask a question? Because the business community now, if they're thinking like I am, what does tabling this ordinance mean? I mean, it's still there. It could come back at any time.
Well, it probably won't come back as an urgency ordinance. And I think we've heard from the public that they don't want us adopting the tariffs and becoming enforcement for those folks. So I'm thinking we're great there. And it sounds as though the community, and I'm assuming all the construction people, and this wasn't just picking on construction, you know, it wasn't at all. And the tariffs that aren't listed in there are the tariffs that Edison was going to hold you to anyway in Stage Two, you know. So, I don't know. I said shred it. He said table it, right?
I'm a little confused myself, so I appreciate the question.
We could move to adopt and vote that, and that would go down, if you wanted it that way.
Well, you...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I mean, if there were some clarity, you could move to adopt and hopefully vote no. Or you could move to not adopt and hopefully vote yes. But to table it, in my mind, to table it just kind of leaves everybody in limbo until the next time somebody decides it needs to be acted on right now.
Would you like to amend your...
Let the city...
We can figure this out clumsily, but...
Tabling it means that this ordinance brought tonight is not being acted upon, and that it is theoretically possible, even if it was voted no, that it could come back. But I think the council has the direction of the city constituents to work with Edison to make certain that Edison is looking at other sources of water, to have Edison be the people in charge of enforcing the water rules, and to look at alternate forms of water delivery, and to thank the community for understanding that water is a significantly small resource in this community, and you're taking great efforts, as demonstrated tonight, to conserve it. I think that's the message from tonight's meeting.
Well said.
Just on the tabling issue or the presentation, I would have been happy to stay home, watch from the comfort of my home this meeting. But if this had just said draft of a possible ordinance for the city to get more involved in managing the water situation, the drought situation in Avalon, I would have stayed home. Then you're opening it up. There's all these issues, and you've presented a lot of issues, but a lot of them need a whole lot of discussion. And when you say urgency ordinance, and I saw this thing, and I thought, four of you vote for it tonight, this is the law, that's kind of scary. So think about your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Lisa.
Just one other thing for some guidance. When you guys had the first brainstorming session, I mentioned I was hoping you guys would think long-term and big picture. I don't, I love the fact that Mike Flynn and the Island Company are getting proactive in terms of bringing water over. I don't think the hydrant in Wilmington should be our hetch-hetchy to try and fix a water issue. So I don't know that that necessarily is a great thing when the entire state of California is in a drought situation. If that's the choice they make as a corporation or entity, that's great, and it does save us water. But I don't know that that's the smartest, most applaudable thing, and I'm kind of bummed that they all left already. So, but anyway, just as a consideration, I don't know if that's really the avenue we want to take. And I would hope for some direction in terms of applying. I don't think that approval would be taken from Planning Commission standpoint based on people bringing in their own water to perform the construction. I don't think I personally would be willing to say that that's okay, to be able to do what you need to keep on doing. I think the same standards still apply, and just want to make sure that that still is the case.
I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Lisa, let me just say that the concern that I have had all along with, in my comments of, I don't think the well is the be-all, end-all solution, I have a much different and much more educated perspective after the three hours understanding more water today. That being said, even if we dug a well, if we found that there was an infinite supply of water, and that happened, that is not going to happen tomorrow. So where we are today, and where our conversations started back, council meetings passed, was, okay, yes, we need to solve the water issue long-term down the road, but what are we going to do today? And today, that is, the possibility of bringing water over dramatically helps get us to, hopefully, you know, winter conditions that we're, you know, all half-drowning in town. That'd be great.
Right. But, no, and actually, like I said, I do applaud their initiative that they took to do that. I just hope it doesn't become the standard instead of the fix for the moment. And if there isn't, let's just be clear, if there isn't the acreage of water, Edison would not give the allocation. Therefore, the city could not issue a building permit. Therefore, they would never be in front of the Planning Commission. Which we still need to see the white paper with the allocation and the numbers.
Exactly. And they are working on that.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Gail Fait, 34, Sol Vista. We need to back off. We're getting too greedy. We don't have the water. I listened to Wayne, all this presentation that he has involved with the cruise ships. Fabulous. We can't, we're not there. We can't do it. We cannot bring in thousands of people and allocate water for these people. We've gotten too greedy. Does anybody agree with me? We have to back off. We have to come back to our small town that we originally came to and love the island, enjoy visitors. Just back off. We're getting too big. We got Edison coming in. We've got all these projections. Stop it. Back off. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gail.
I'm just a resident.
Hi, Zella.
And when I come home from work every day, most of the days down the Avalon Canyon, and I haven't heard anything about the county here, and the county fire department is washing their trucks with gallons and gallons and gallons of water running down that canyon, and I get a little bucket of water for my golf cart every two or three months, let alone my shower every day. There's something wrong with this. And I think we need to look at those things. Why is the county not answering? Why are they using the water we could drink to wash the fire trucks? I don't care if they're dirty a little bit. They're not here to keep clean. They're here to stop fires. And things like that. And the Island Company building new homes out on the old horse trail. I mean, we have housing up in Hamilton Cove that's not even being used. The new Bird Park, they're not all sold. So why are they okaying more housing, water running down Avalon Canyon that people could drink? There's something wrong with this picture. And neither one of those things came up tonight. And it makes me angry.
Well, the fire trucks, that's one issue. And in terms of the Island Company's housing in the canyon, nothing has even been, has even come forward to the city, correct, Ben? So that's...
Right. There's been no application made.
Right. There's no application for that. So...
And there's been... And there's been no answer to about two pages worth of questions.
And there has been discussion on the topics that you've proposed, and that is the request to have Edison actually police their own rationing right now. So that has been addressed.
They don't police it very well. I mean, anybody running down that canyon. And it goes on for hours and hours. There's something wrong with that.
No, thank you. And thank you for being a watchdog. And when you see things like that, you should call Edison.
It doesn't do any good to call Edison. I've done that.
Well, actually, I'm gonna go ahead and share an experience that some of us had today, which was coming down in an Edison vehicle after a water tour. And we had a resident stop us right in the middle of the road at Five Corners here, parked her golf cart right in front of the Edison vehicle, proceeded to get out of the golf cart to come around to report that there was water running down Whitley. Great. Immediately, on the radio, had Edison, you know, up there, and turns out it was a small saltwater leak. So, things do happen, and I think it's very unfair to say that, you know, it doesn't do any good, because it does do good. I mean, see something, say something, and eventually, you know, people will get to where they need to get to.
Any other comments before we go into closed session? Thank you all for hanging with us.
I would...
Oh, yes.
I would suggest that, because there are some people here, if we wanted to have any city manager, city attorney, council member reports, we do that. Closed session may probably only take 20 minutes, maybe. But in case anyone wants to leave, is interested in the other sections, maybe we should do that.
Can I leave?
Yes, you may. You're excused.
Okay, I guess the only item I would have is, just as a follow-up to what we were just talking about, Edison asked me tonight to invite all of you who have not seen the water infrastructure to take advantage of their offer. And they're happy to arrange for a tour based on your schedule. So just letting you know, and I'd be happy to set that up for you. That's it. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Yeah, we did have the ethics session last week, two weeks ago, and there was very detailed discussion about indirect financial conflict of interest. I've printed out the regs for the council, so I'm gonna give this to you so you know if it's not your business, but it's a business that you may work for. And if it has a potential conflict, I'm giving you the financial figures so that each item you can look at and determine whether you have a conflict. So I'm gonna hand that to you. Rather than emailing it, I thought I'd just hand it to you.
Great.
That's it.
Councilmember reports? Cindy?
I have none.
Just that I was appointed to the seats vacated by Michael on the Rev. Tax Committee for the League of California Cities and on the Community Something Committee, and I was going to be attending those two committee meetings on Thursday and Friday. I will report back.
Thank you. Joe? Did you have any reports?
No, thank you.
No? And Mayor has none.
We have two closed sessions, Confess with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation. This is the Tiblisa matter, part two. And then, Confess with Legal Counsel, Initiation of Litigation. This is considering initiation of litigation against Catalina Snorkeling and Scoob Adventures.
Thank you. And we are back from closed session. Scott Campbell?
There was pursuant to Government Code 54957.1A2, there was no reportable action taken as defined in the Brown Act.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there's no other comments. Meeting is adjourned.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.